The closing prayer by Dean Smith.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please say that we can all learn something new today, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Jill Farnsworth Geigel has been married to her husband Jeremy Geigel for almost twenty-eight years. They are the parents of eight children, and they have one grandchild. In two thousand eight, Jill and Jeremy founded the Arizona Family Council with a mission to protect children against pornography through education and legislation. Sister Geigel is a passionate advocate for and defender of children. Her motivation to fight sexual exploitation is her own wonderful children and grandchild. Subsequent to her earning a master's in education from Columbia International University, Sister Geigel began traveling locally, nationally, and internationally, speaking with parents and youth about child sexual exploitation. These experiences enlightened her as she develops curriculums to help parents and educators build pornography-resistant youth and children. Sister Geigel worked with the organization known as Defend Young Minds to develop a curriculum for elementary-age children called Brain Defense, which is used in homes and schools around the country. Sister Geigel also created a workbook for parents entitled Prepare Your Child Pornography Resistance, which gives parents the tools to build pornography resistance in their children. Sister Geigel recently worked as the developer and director of the Parents Center at the National Center on Sexual Exploitation in Washington, DC. We welcome Sister Geigel to our Stake Youth Fireside this afternoon and look forward to hearing her tips and tools on how we can safely use technology to bless our lives.
It is so good to be with you. I love this group of people. So many of you I teach and work with in mission prep, and I think you are the best. So many of you I have taught primary music to and sung with. And I know your hearts, and I love you. It is so fun to talk to people that I love. One time I was in Ethiopia, and I'd been called there to talk about this topic, pornography and technology, and I was speaking to government leaders, and we were summoned by the leader of the Ethiopian Orthodox Church. And he's like the president of their church, and he is in charge of like fifty million people or more. And he summoned us to come in and talk to him about pornography and internet safety. And so we went in, and we... He was kind of on a throne. This was really amazing. It was a really unique experience. It felt like I was in a movie. He was on a throne, and there were certain words that I was supposed to say to him when I went in. I had to speak his language. And then I came into this room, and there were all of these men that were priests in their church, and they were in black robes, and very important, and they were all sitting in this room, and they were there to hear what I had to say, and what we had to say about this topic. But when I come into this room with you, I feel more honored to be speaking to the covenant people of the Lord. You are children of the covenant. You know who you are. And I love being a fellow disciple of Jesus Christ and talking to you today about something that's so important and something that you're dealing with every day in your life. So thank you for letting me be here. Here we go. I'm gonna start with this. So when Brother Geigel was in high school, a long, long time ago, he had a vending machine in his high school that you could get snacks. Well, you used to, back in the day, you would have these things called dollar bills that you would take with you. You'd go to the vending machine, you'd stick it in, and then you'd get a treat, right? Well, there was a boy in his school that decided that it would be really cool to just make fake dollars and put them in the vending machine. And it worked. He made some fake dollars, and he put it in the vending machine, and he started getting all the snacks that he wanted. It was a great system. Until a few weeks or months later, I don't know how long it took, the FBI showed up at their school and said, "You can't make fake money. That's a really big crime, right? Can't do that." So today, I want to talk a little bit about what is fake and what is real. Why was it kind of... Why did that boy want to use fake money? Liam? I'm gonna move down. In a minute, I'm gonna put my mic on and come so I can talk to you. But why do you want to use fake money, Liam? Like, what's good about that? Okay, but why would you not want to use real money? How do you get real money? Oh, you have to work. You have to work to get something real, right? So today, sometimes we get a little confused in this day and age about what is real and what is fake, or what is counterfeit is the word for this, for money, right? But we can call it fake. So today, that's what I came here to do. We're just gonna talk about some of the issue of technology and pornography. And I don't want you guys to think I'm coming here to judge you, or to take your phones away, or to make you feel bad for what you're doing. All I want to do is share some information with you that I've learned in twenty-plus years of being in this space, of talking to leaders of countries, to leaders of governments, to leaders of the companies, social media companies, technology companies, and finding out what, and being able to talk to them. And I want to just share this information with you so that you guys can choose what you want to do with it, right? You get to choose. I think you all know that there is no way, and I've experienced this, I have eight children, seven of them are old enough to have their own devices. There's no way that as a parent, I can stop or get in front of all technology in front of every one of my children, right? I think you all know that even if I take a phone away, there's a Chromebook. Even if I take a Chromebook away from my child, they have a friend who has a phone. Even if I isolate him, there's always another thing. Even if I put filters on, there's a way that you guys know to get around it. It happens all the time, and every one of my children have done these things. And I have made mistakes, and they've made mistakes. And so I know that there's no way that your parents can get in front of everything and stop everything harmful from coming into your lives when it comes to technology and pornography. I know that. It's impossible in this day and age, right? But if you have some information, if you guys can get some power, maybe you can make some better choices that can help yourself stay spiritually and physically safe. So that's kind of what we're gonna do today, right? So what we're gonna do, here's the four things that the goal is for today. First, we're gonna talk about what is real and what is fake. I want to give you some glasses so you can identify the counterfeit, right? I want to give you the glasses so that while you're out there, you'll know, "Oh, I'm on the path of fake," or "I'm on the path of real." So I'm gonna give you these glasses by talking to you about what is real versus fake. Who is on your team? We're gonna talk about who's on your team and who is not on your team, right? And then I'm gonna give you four tools or four areas that will help you create pornography resistance in yourself, because you'll probably pop into, you'll probably see pornography in your life, but you need to know what to do to be resistant to it and to try to stay away from it, right? And to get yourself ready to manage tech in healthy and happy ways, right? So I'm gonna give you the four tools. And then finally, I really want you to be in a growth mindset, a repentance and growth mindset. So those are the four things that we're gonna do today, and I'm gonna move fast. I have a sincere prayer that the Holy Ghost will be here. This is a lot of information, and you're a big diverse group of ages, right? I have young kids here, up to adults here. And I need the Holy Ghost. For you, I would hope that you'll be listening to the Holy Ghost and the things that you hear in your heart and in your mind. Pay attention to those things and work on those, because all of this can be overwhelming. This can be a lot. But if you just think, "Oh, I can do the one thing that the Holy Ghost told me today," then that would be awesome, okay? So I really pray humbly that he'll be here with us. All right, let's get into it. What is real and what is fake? This is Jesus. He's my friend, and he is real. How he lived his life is real. His attributes are real. The things about Jesus are real. And when you're living and doing these things, you will know you're on the track to be doing real things, things that last for eternity, not things that will end in this life. So I'm gonna go through each of these little bullet points quickly. All of these have a scripture or prophets' words behind them, but I don't have enough time to go through all of that with you. What we're trying to do here is I'm trying to show you, these are things that are real. So if you find yourself doing these things, you know you're on the right track, right? So the first thing about Jesus that the scriptures say is that "There was no beauty around him that men should desire him." The second thing that Elder Uchtdorf says about Jesus is that he was not in a hurry. He was slow. The next thing, Jesus offers us long-term rewards. He invites you to act and follow him of your own free will. He just invites you. He has unconditional love. Jesus loves you guys no matter what. No matter what. No matter what you look like, no matter what you do, no matter the mistakes you make, no matter the sins you make, Jesus still loves you. No matter if you do something awkward or silly, he still loves you. His arms, he has open arms, and they're waiting to encircle you with his love. He focuses on turning outward, even when it's hard, rather than turning inward. Focuses on serving others. He focuses on small changes to bring about great things. He requires work and change. He looks on the heart. He's willing. He wants to share all that he has with you. Jesus wants to share all that he has with you. He's willing to give you his power. He offers you things that last for eternity, not just things that last on earth. He works one by one. He helps you go through hard things, and he feels hard things with you. He feels feelings. He invites you to act, to create beauty, to use your body, to experience earth life. He wants you to do things, right? Those are, that's real. Okay, I also want you to just for a minute, think of the last time you felt Jesus' love. Think of that feeling for a minute. Okay, now we're gonna go to the next thing. I want you to think that it's your birthday. And in front of you is a box, and it's about that size. And you open it, and it's an iPhone seventeen Air. Yeah, I know, they haven't even made them yet. What are the feelings, right? What are the feelings you're having at this moment? It's looking beautiful. You open it. How are you feeling? Okay, let's talk about, we talked about Jesus and the things that are real about Jesus. Now let's talk about technology, social media, and pornography. Technology is the actual phone that you're holding on to. Social media and apps, they're the things that are on the phone, right? And pornography is the content that you can see sometimes on the phone if you have it. Let's see how this is different than Jesus and how it might be. All of these might be leading you to something that is fake. These are sleek, luxurious, beautiful, desirable, right? When you open that box, it's pretty. You want it. They're fast. They're trying to make them faster all the time. It gives you instant gratification, exactly what you want when you want it. It tries to capture your mind and body with tricks and dopamine hits and other chemicals in your brain, right? All of these use tricks, neurological tricks, to get your brain to become addicted to their product. Jesus just invites us to come to him. These guys trick you and get you hooked to their product, right? They give you conditional likes, right? Sometimes people like you on social media, and sometimes they don't. They bind your brain and body chemically to their product. I already said that one. Focus on yourself. They make you focus on yourself and turn inward. They don't care if you do anything as long as you're just sitting on their product. They don't care if you're moving your body or experiencing anything in your life as long as you just have their product right in front of you, right? They make things as easy as it can. They don't care if you work. They just want you to be entertained. They look on the physical appearance, and their algorithms promote certain physical appearances, right? They want to make you a minion. Mark Zuckerberg will never share all that he has with you. Never, right? They want to take your power. They don't want to share power with you. They offer you stuff that only lasts temporarily, very temporarily. They want to get mass followers. They want to numb your feelings. They don't want you to feel your feelings. They want you to use their products to numb your feelings. They trick you into sitting and doing nothing in this life. Those are just a few indicators of what is real and what is fake. So the next time you're out doing some work in your front yard, and you're mowing the grass, and you're feeling the sweat come down, you congratulate yourself for doing something that's real. You're doing a real thing, right? Any of those things that you feel and you're doing, I want you to pay attention and say, "Oh, wait, this is all about instant gratification," or "This is about how pretty someone is," or "This is about how fast I can get what I want." Then you have an alarm bell in your mind and go, "Oh, wait, maybe I'm on the wrong path here. Maybe I'm going for something that might be fake, might be temporary, okay?" So that's our first kind of clue. I just want to get you feeling what is real and what is fake. Okay, now the next thing I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go through four areas. These areas are from all my research, the research I've conducted, the research I've read, the people I've talked to, and I found that there's these four areas that really help us become strong and resistant to tech and pornography, if we can really work on them. And I call them tools because when you look at these four areas, relationships, communication, creating a place of safety, and the doctrine of Jesus Christ, you can use them in a few ways. You can say, "Oh, I really want to make myself strong in these four areas." And you can work on these areas, and we're gonna talk about them, don't worry. But when you make a mistake, you can also think to yourself, "Which of these four areas am I not doing so well in? What do I need to work on?" So it's kind of, they're areas that are tools, and you're gonna see. And I want you to start thinking about these and start really assessing yourself and figuring out, "Where am I in these areas, and what am I doing that might be helpful?" So the first one is relationships. I think, before we get to relationships, I think I missed one bullet point that I want to go over a little bit more, and that is, who is on your team? I want to let you know that I've met in small rooms like this with the CEOs of the biggest social media companies that there are. I've met in the room with Mark Zuckerberg, the CEO of TikTok, Twitter, it was X, it was Twitter at the time, Snap, Discord. I've sat in the room, and I've had senators ask them and show them and tell them, "Hey, your product is hurting children," and show them all the evidence. It's hurting them mentally. It's giving them mental illness, and it's hurting them physically. And what they say is, "That's your fault. That's the parent's fault. That's the kid's fault." There is nothing, I've never one time heard a social media or a tech person take responsibility and say, "You're right, we need to change and make a safer platform for kids and teens." They don't care about you. They are not on your team. They don't care about your physical, spiritual, sexual, emotional health. In fact, they will hurt you purposefully so that they can capture you and your brain at a young age. And they will, they know that statistically, if they capture you at a young age, they will keep you their whole life. So they're in a race to try to capture your brains and your eyes at a young age. They don't care about how you are doing. They're not trying to make a product just to make your life easier and better. They're trying to make a product so that they own you and own your brain for your whole life. I've seen it over and over and over. So I just want you guys to know that they are not on your side. And even more, you should probably know, I mean, how can this happen? Doesn't the government protect kids and teens? Don't they make, doesn't the government make us wear seat belts, helmets? They make products so that kids can't choke on them. They do all these things, right? So we have this idea that the government is going to protect us, that these products are okay. If they're letting kids on them, certainly they're good for teens. They're gonna be okay for you. I have some bad news. There hasn't been a law passed in this country to protect kids and teens on technology and social media since nineteen ninety-six. In the nineteen hundreds, they passed a law. They didn't even know what social media was back then when they passed that law. They haven't ever passed any more laws to protect you guys. And so because of that, these companies who are not on your team have chosen to exploit you and capture you and do everything they possibly can get away with right now until the law changes. And so knowing that, knowing that they're not on your team, you need to be able to protect yourself. And so I'm gonna go through these four areas, and hopefully you guys will be able to catch on and figure out so that you'll be aware what is real and how to keep yourself on the real track and not let these guys take over your mind and body, right? Okay, so let's start with relationships. Relationships used to be easy. Like, I didn't have a phone when I grew up, so I'd walk into a classroom, and I'd like look at the guys next to me, and I'd talk to them, and we'd laugh. Or if I was bored at home, I'd call someone on the phone, and I'd have them come play games with me, or we'd go out bike riding or whatever. You guys have screens, so you haven't learned how to create relationships in the same way, right? You're using a screen like this, or you're playing games on your screen, and you're not interacting the same way. And so it's really important that you guys focus on creating relationships with people face-to-face, because it changes your brain and it gives you health. It gives you healthy mental ability when you have face-to-face relationships with people, okay? Heavenly Father knew that relationships were important, and he put the feeling in you, just like we need to eat and sleep, we have the feeling that we need to be loved and belong. Heavenly Father wants us to belong. It's a really strong innate feeling. And so he gives us the commandment to love God, to love others. He gives us families to be in. He gives us classes and quarms to connect with. All of these people are on your team. And these are people that you need to build relationships with, because when you have strong relationships, you're able to be more resistant to porn and to take it over. Now, I have this little chart up here. I'm gonna tell you, when we get on tech and porn, it causes us to isolate. You'll notice it, right? When you're on your phone a lot, you just want to be by yourself. Right? And you aren't reaching out. But it makes us emotionally fragile. And let me show you how. So on this side of the chart, this is called your attachment cycle. This is called your addiction cycle. Now, in all of our lives, things happen. That's called attention, right? Tension. You fail a test. You get asked to talk in church. You see something on social media that your friends have done that they didn't invite you to. Right? You have tension. You have feelings. Bored, lonely, angry, stressed, anxious, tired. Those are called the blast feelings. So you'll see the word blast up there? You have urges. You're all getting old enough that you probably have sexual urges. That's a normal part of growing up. It's a normal part of having a body. And it happens, right? And it's positive. That's how our bodies were designed. So you're gonna have all of the mixture of these feelings, these urges and tension. Now what do we do with those? And this is what really matters. We have a few choices. Let's say you have something like you failed a test. Failed a test that day. Tension happens, right? You're, you're having some pain. You have the chance to either isolate on your phone, a lot of times, isolate, which is on the addiction cycle, or you have the chance to reach out to a person, a trusted person. Connect, build a relationship. And you can tell them, hey, I failed this test today. They are going to then, if it's a trusted person that you care about, they're going to reach out to you in something that we call attunement. They're gonna look at you and say, ah dang, I'm sorry. Doesn't have to be that big of a deal, right? Doesn't have to be this big, all these words. It just has to be, you just express it and they, they acknowledge it. Oh, I'm sorry about that. When that happens, an attachment is formed. You process the feeling and you have this attachment to a person. You've gone through something with someone. And you become emotionally stronger. You become more resistant to technology. You become more resistant to pornography. Because now you're feeling better, right? And you've become stronger in your mind. The other way is you decide to isolate. You head to your phone or you do something that is isolating. It can be all kinds of different things that you can do, right? You still feel bad. That you failed that test and you still have that awful feeling. So then you try to turn to your phone to numb it. And it can be through pornography or just other content on your phone. YouTube shorts over and over and over again, whatever it may be, right? Guess what? It gives you temporary relief. You feel a little bit better for a minute. But then when you stop, how do you feel? Yeah, you do. You feel tired, you feel worse. You feel worse. You become emotionally fragile. And then you're more, you're more able to fall back and you're like, oh, I don't feel good. Now I need to go back to my phone and start looking at those YouTube shorts again and again, right? So you get into this cycle, which is the addiction cycle or the habit cycle. And it makes you fragile and it makes you keep turning back in to isolate. And it makes you feel worse and worse. So building relationships, having three to five people that are trusted, that you can talk to, that you reach out to every day will make all the difference. This is important. We don't have time, but a lot of times what I'll do is have you do a quick role play right here where I say, okay, turn to the person next to you and tell them, Liam loves role plays when I do them, huh? Yeah. Turn to the person next to you and tell them that you had a bad day and help them say, attune to you. That's how fast it is. That's all it needs to be. It will make you stronger. You wanna do it? Go ahead. Pretend that you had a bad day and tell the person and let him attune. That's awesome. Okay, bring it back. Let's bring it back. That was awesome. I saw, I saw a few hugs out there. I saw a few pats on the arm. You guys, that's connecting. That's all it takes is talking to someone. So when you walk into a classroom at school, instead of walking in on your phone, put your phone down, look at the person you're about to sit by and talk to them. That's it. That's how easy relationships is. Work on looking at people and talking to them and you will feel so much happier than being and sitting on your phone. Okay, that was awesome. Now let's go to communication. Communication is a big one, you guys. You need to regularly, often be talking to your parents about healthy sexuality and pornography. I know, that can be awkward. But the more that you talk about that with your parents, the more normal it will be. And the more healthy and strong you'll be when you see all of the lies and the counterfeit that is on your phone and on your computer, right? Um, you are all getting so many sexual messages every day and your brains and bodies are not ready for them. Most of them are lies. You need to have somebody on your team who can tell you the truth about sex, about pornography. And that are, that is your parents. So when you have questions about sex and about pornography, you need to talk to them. You need to be talking to them on a regular basis. If your parents aren't talking to you about this, ask them today. Okay? Pornography, just so you know what pornography is, is images, music, written words, movies of people who have little or no clothing on, focused on the sexual parts of their body. And when you see it, you know what it is, right? You need to know what that is because when you see it, you need to be able to talk to your parents about it. Because pornography is full of lies. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of a a tool here. It's called recognize, refuse, and report. When you see something that you don't want to see, pornography, we call it, you need to recognize it. You need to be able to say, I, oh wow, that's pornography. You need to be able to say that. I know that's crazy. It makes you want to die to think that you'd need to say that. But let me tell you why you say that. Because when you see pornography, your, your thoughts and your, your natural instinct is to come down here into your lower brain. And when you get into your lower brain and you're thinking in your lower brain, you have more of a time of, of causing habit forming thoughts and, and problems, right? But as soon as you recognize something and start using this part of your brain right here, you're gonna be in a better place. So you say out loud, and you guys all should practice, practice this with your parents. Um, you say, oh, that's pornography. And then as soon as you're saying that, you're refusing it. You're saying, you're just shutting it off your phone. You're closing your Chromebook. You're doing whatever you have to, to try to stop it. Getting it out of your eyes, right? And then here's the communication part. You need to just report it. This doesn't mean you need to go have an hour long conversation with your parents. Just means you need to send a quick text. Uh, saw something I didn't want to see. Right? That easy. It's that easy. It's not too difficult. But it's super important to stay out of that habit forming spot that you can get with pornography, okay? The, the combination of recognizing it, refusing it, and reporting it is huge. And the communication with your parents about what healthy sexuality is and what pornography is, it'll save your life. It's something that you can talk about all the time. Like with my kids, it's like at, you know, in the car, at dinner, hey, what have you seen on your phones today? Anything that's bothered you? Or if I see something, or if, or if Brother Geigel sees something, we'll say, hey, I saw something today that I did not like to see. And I, you know, I figured out how we could not go to that website again or, or manage it. So we talk about it. We talk about it regularly and openly in our house. It will change your life. The internet is full of lies. You need to have your parents on your team and you need to feel comfortable with your parents so that you can find out the truth. If you don't feel comfortable with your parents right at this moment, you can always talk to your bishops. They hear this stuff all the time. It's not gonna scare them or shock them or anything, okay? So find a trusted source, someone you can talk to about this. And start communicating. I know that's a big deal. I know that's a tall order, but it will help you forever if you do. And I told your parents to talk to you about it, so hopefully they, they will. All right. Our next thing, I'm gonna come on down here for. Okay, our next thing is called creating a place of safety. Yeah, turn that on for me, please, Jer. Get ready, because I'm gonna ask you guys some questions. I know you love that. Okay. Thank you. So Captain Moroni, you guys. Captain Moroni, he um, he's going into war. The Lamanites are coming after him, right? And what happens is he goes back to his place and he builds places which the scriptures called, he calls a place of, a place of security. He goes and he, he assesses all of his weakest cities and he builds them. Um, he builds strength all around them. Thanks. He builds them into strong, strong areas, right? He builds dirt up and he puts big logs up on the top and then he puts people on the top that he can kill them, right? So that's what we need to do. We need to find our weak spots when it comes to technology. And then we need to build defenses. And you guys need to, because you know where your weak spots are. Right? I don't, there's a million different weak spots. You guys know them. I don't know them. So you guys need to find out and assess what are your weak spots? And how can you make them strong? What are things that you can do to make them strong? Okay, now I'm gonna ask some questions of people and I, I don't want you to feel, no, this mic is kinda knuckle-y. Just pretend, this isn't like judgment, this is just just information. So first question I'm gonna just ask is, I know, let me find people who already know me so they're not in a panic. Oh, he doesn't know me yet. Owen, you know me. Owen, when when's the last time you checked to see how much screen time you're, how much screen time are you using? This is not judgment. This is just, we're just, I'm gonna ask all of you, lots of it. Think of it. Last time you checked, I'm not even asking how much screen time. I'm just asking, do you know how much screen time's your average?
Yeah.
You do? How much? Too much? Okay, too much. Just tell me, give me a number.
Like three hours, probably?
Serious? Okay, how much? Do you know how much screen time?
No.
You don't even know how much screen time? Okay. Okay, do you know how much screen time?
Six hours.
Okay, six hours a day. Do you know? No, you don't know? Hey, no judgment. Ashlyn, do you know how much screen time? Do you watch it?
Yeah, there's limits.
You have, so she watches her, she knows. Um, do you know how much screen time?
Twelve.
You know. Okay, good. So that's good. Okay, hey, do you guys know, there's another thing that I want you to be watching besides your screen time? It's your pickups. Who knows what pickups are? Do you know, Jonas?
It's how many times you pick up your phone and what to?
Right, so, so do, it's a, it's a number on your phone, right? You can look at and see how many pickups that you do every day. That's just how many times you look at your phone. Okay? Healthy pickups would be fifty. Jonas, how many do you have? Tell me how many. Just, I mean, like a healthy, think of it. If you picked up your phone once an hour for twenty-four hours, you'd have twenty-four. Good job. So he has forty-three right now. Normally, when I check with kids on their pickups, there's like a hundred, two hundred, that kind of stuff. Good job. Good job. So check your pickups on your phone, you guys. Just a minute, bud. I have to tell you this. The phones are so addictive. Listen to this story. This is a really kind of a sad story. The phones are made to be so addictive that it's hard not to pick them up, right? This is a, this, they do this and they make it on purpose. So that your brain and your body are physically compelled to pick them up. So I had a stake presidency member, not in our stake, tell me that one time he was in his office with a young man who he was giving a blessing to. He had his hands laid on his head and he was giving the blessing. And during the blessing, this boy's, he was, this was a teenage boy. This boy's phone buzzed. And the boy reached in his pocket and pulled the phone out and started reading it during the blessing. My friend didn't quite know what to do. He's giving him a blessing. A priesthood blessing, words from the Lord. He said he, he stopped, he paused for a minute. And then the boy put his phone down and he started the blessing again. And it happened again. That is how programmed our response is. Right? So pay attention to your screen time, pay attention to your pickups. There's one other big warning I want to warn you on, which is TikTok and YouTube shorts or anything like that. You know that TikTok has a whole bunch of internal documents that were just exposed. And one of the things that they tell is that they know and they use and they tell, they use internally, how long it takes to get you addicted to their product. Anyone have any idea how many minutes or how many videos does it take to get addicted to their product? What?
Thirty-six minutes.
That's right. Lucy, got it. Thirty-five minutes. Or two hundred and sixty videos. Can you imagine watching two hundred and sixty videos in thirty-five minutes? That's what they do. Those little tiny videos, the YouTube shorts and the TikTok are so dangerous to your brain because it's a dopamine hit every few seconds, every few seconds, every few seconds. And every time you hit the dopamine, it gets, you, you want more and more and more. And when you finally stop, your brain can't take any more dopamine. It is made, our brain is made to work, 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 and then receive a dopamine hit. It's not made to just get dopamine after dopamine after dopamine. And so when you do that to your brain, when you finish it, it goes in, when you're off the product, the product or the platform, your brain has a tendency to go into depressed state. Or anxiety. That's why you have so much anxiety and depression around technology and phones. Okay, so those are two warnings there. My next question, yes. Clef, boys. When's the last time you used AI?
Uh, it's been like
This is just a question. I, I just, I don't know. I like to find out who's using stuff, so there's no shame here.
Um, the last time I used it was like on eBay for like a description, but other than that, I haven't used it in like a year, so.
Wow, a year? Yeah, I believe you. I'm not, I don't doubt you guys. Okay, so he used it, last time you used AI?
I don't have a phone.
So you don't even use it on computers? School?
What do you mean by AI?
Good question. Perfect. Yeah, any of it.
So like even just a screen popping up would count?
Well, kind of, I guess, if you're reading it. You did? I like it, reading it. Do you use AI? Okay, hold on. Shh. Last time?
Uh, Friday on my school project.
School project, good. Last time you used AI?
Do you use it?
No.
No, you're not an AI guy. Okay. Any, last time you used AI, Marie?
Uh, I think a month ago.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, this is just important because this is a new technology coming out and it's super important to be aware of the dangers of AI and the problems that it can be. My husband's a criminal defense attorney and he deals with people, people all the time. My husband's a criminal defense attorney and he deals with people, people all the time are getting in trouble using AI. Not gonna get into all the trouble that you can get into, but what I would ask you to do is ask your parents tonight to find Elder Bednar's Talk. It's called Things As They Really Are 2.0. You guys should watch it with them and talk about AI. And when you use AI, talk to your parents about it. Because there's so many things that you don't know about on AI that can get you into trouble, okay? It's not, it, there's big consequences. So, using AI is important and there's fun things you can do, but be smart about it and get your parents involved so that you can understand what it is. Parents are on your team, right? Parents are on your team. So get them involved, understand the dangers, make some helps together, and then you can move forward. Alright. See, I had one more question I was gonna do. Where's my spot? Oh, what time do you put your phone to bed every night?
Uh, depends.
So you don't have a set time?
No.
Is it in your room or is it somewhere else?
My room.
Okay. Any, do you have a, let's see, I've already had this side. I gotta come back here, farther back. Do you have a bedtime for your phone?
Nine.
Nine o'clock? Is it in your room or not?
It's in our living room.
It's in the living room. Bedtime for your phone, sorry, yes, do you, do you have a bedtime for your phone?
Nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty, is it in your room or not?
No.
No? Bedtime? Do you have one?
No.
Okay. This is another really simple one, you guys, that you can do that really keeps you safe. Most of the big, big, big consequences and dangers that happen to kids are at night. When their phones should be docked in the kitchen or by their parents' bed, somewhere far away from where you are. Put your phone far away from where you are. Don't have technology in your bedrooms. Let your brains go to sleep. Your brains and bodies must have a rest. They are not programmed for technology all the time. If you have technology in your room, it is so alluring to keep you up all night. The other thing is, you do things that you don't normally do when you're so tired. There's one thing that I do want to warn you about. There's a lot of scams that are going around. This is common, this isn't uncommon. It happens to kids of all ages, parents of all ages, and even missionaries, I've heard. People will ask you for nude pictures of yourself. And sometimes kids will give them the nude pictures. And you think it's maybe somebody that you know on social media or maybe a, a older girl or boy that you're talking to, right? And they're, they ask you for a nude picture and maybe you make the mistake of giving it to them. Which is a mistake and we all know that. But maybe you make that mistake of giving it to them. And then what happens is, they will come back and they'll say, "Hey, unless you give me money, I'm gonna tell your mom and dad or your bishop or your mission president." And so then, you start panicking, right? This is a really big deal. It happens pretty often, you guys. Don't panic. If this happens to you, go tell your parents right then. It's so much better. Your parents can work it out. These people, they're not gonna hurt you. They're usually criminals that are doing it on purpose. I mean, all over, right? It's scams, just like all the other scams that you see. Don't, don't panic. A lot of kids panic when they get these texts and do drastic things. Don't do that. Just know that it's a scam, know that you've done something wrong, but we can get it worked out, okay? We can get it worked out. It's okay. Come tell someone and get help. You don't want to get caught up with, you know, in this kind of scam stuff. So recognize that it's a scam and get help when you see texts or talk to people on social media like that. Alright. Sorry. Yep. I think I'll end with... Will you turn that off, Jer? Create your own place of safety and then talk to your parents and create places of safety in your home. You need teamwork. Parents and leaders are not the enemies. They are the ones trying to help. Social media and tech, they're the ones that are trying to hurt you. Be wise to that. Create a place of safety in your home. Recognize your weakness and help and tell your parents, "Hey, I need you to take my phone at nine. I need you to take TikTok off my phone." Have the courage to do it. It will change your life, okay? Create places of safety and keep checking yourself. They change. Sometimes you get good at one area. Sometimes you need play, you know, strength in another area. Do it. Create a place of safety in your life. Okay, finally. We're gonna talk about knowing and living the doctrine of Jesus Christ. Who knows what the doctrine of Jesus Christ is? My missionaries do. The missionaries do, but my mission, my mission prep class should. Fourth article of faith, yes, Jonas? Thank you. The doctrine of Jesus Christ is, first, faith in the Lord Jesus Christ, second, repentance, third, baptism by immersion for the remission of sins, fourth, laying on of hands for the gift of the Holy Ghost. Awesome. And then doing it over and over and over again. This is what Jesus Christ came to do, to make possible and to give us. Sometimes we think it's just one thing that we check off, right? But the doctrine of Jesus Christ is a cycle and it's kind of like that cycle that I told you before. Remember the attachment cycle that we practiced? Remember how we're supposed to, when we have a problem, we reach out to someone and then they attune to us, they respond to us? This is what the doctrine of Christ's cycle is. Look at this. When we have a problem, when we've sinned or when we're having a bad day, we reach out in faith and repentance to Heavenly Father. And He responds to us with covenants and with the Holy Ghost. He gave us this cycle so we could attach to Him. That's how much He loves us. He wants us to be with Him. Remember, when we're dealing with technology and with pornography and sexuality, we might make some mistakes. But repentance is not the backup plan of Heavenly Father. It is the plan. This is the first plan He gave us. So making a mistake is not the end. Sometimes when we make mistakes around tech and porn, we feel shame. Shame is this feeling like, "I am a bad person and if somebody knew what I just did, they would never love me." I could never tell them what I've seen or done, because they would never love me. The problem with shame is it stops us from reaching to Heavenly Father and Jesus or it stops us to reaching, from reaching to our parents for help. How do we get rid of shame? It's so easy. All the research has shown, to get rid of shame, all you have to do is talk about it. Just talk about the problem and then the shame leaves and you're able to get help. So, when we're dealing with tech and porn, you want to make sure that if there's, if you're ever feeling that shame, talk to someone about it so the shame can come down and you can reach out in faith to Heavenly Father and Jesus and connect with them. They are cheering for you. Your parents and your leaders are cheering for you. We're not getting mad at you if you mess up. We're cheering that you're doing a great job. That is growth mindset, right? We're cheering that you're learning. We know that you're trying. We know that you're trying to get better. I want to show you this video. This is my granddaughter. It's the cutest video ever. It's kind of long, so stay in there for, it's like a minute and a half. She's learning how to roll over, okay? Uh-oh. Hold on, hold on. We didn't check our volume. Her name's Belle, but...
Help her with chika-chika boom, put it like up there.
Oh. Hold on, now I messed it all up. It didn't have it. Damn it, this is the cutest. It's not, I need tech people up there.
You can do it!
Can you hear that?
You can do it, Belle!
You gotta, you just gotta roll over. Put your armband head in there.
Assume his position. Help her with chika-chika boom, put it like up there maybe, so she can see it better.
Boom is over there now.
It's over here. If you have to lift it up and then like bring it down.
Come on, Belle. Oh, she sees it.
Come on, Belle!
Yes.
Come on!
He's hurt by himself.
Yes! You got it! Yes! This is such a good work!
Okay.
Oh, no.
Here, maybe help her get to chika-boom. Oh, no! Oh, God, you did it!
Okay, normally we don't clap in the chapel, you guys, just so you remember, but that is how it is. That's how we're cheering for you. This is hard stuff you guys are doing. This has never been done before. Heavenly Father didn't put weak spirits to come down here and work through technology, pornography, mental health issues, all of the things that this world has to offer. He didn't put weak spirits down here. He put you. And He is walking with you because you are His covenant people and He is cheering with you. He's cheering when you make a mistake, when you fall down, when you're learning how to walk. We don't get mad at you. We help you and pick you up and say, "You got this. We can help you. Good job. You're getting stronger." That's the way we want to think about technology and pornography. We're cheering to help you. We know you're gonna make it. We know you're gonna do a great job. Don't think of us as the enemy. We are your best cheerleaders, right? I'll finish with this last story. Nope, I'm gonna finish with that story. I'm gonna show you this. This is something that I use, I give to people. I have, if you didn't grab one on the way in, get one on the way out. This is, gives the four areas that I just went through. Relationships, communication, security, and Jesus Christ. This is something that you guys can use every day to just assess yourself, right? "How am I?" This is a scale. It asks some questions in each of those areas. You guys can see where you're doing. Is this a day that you should be on the phone a lot? Are you up there in the tens? Or is this a day you should let your phone rest for a while, okay? This is just a way to check yourself. So, I brought these for you and I actually have a little dry erase marker that you can take too. So make sure you get them on your way out if you don't already have them, okay? Alright, I just want to end with my testimony. I know that Heavenly Father is cheering for you. I know that Jesus Christ is helping you. I know that because of the promises and the covenants that you've made with them, they're not gonna leave you to do this on your own. I know that your parents and your leaders are also covenant people and they are trying with all their heart to help you along the way and help ourselves on the way back to Jesus Christ. And I know that if we work together as a team, we will be successful in this. And I'm so thankful for Jesus Christ showing us what is real. And I love Him and I love all of you and I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we could come here today and that we're grateful for the people that took time to prepare this. Please help us to use what we learn in our lives and please help us to drive home safely so we can spend the rest of the day with our families.